I'd like to call this special meeting the Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, January 30, 2024 at 4:00 PM for the purpose of a work session. Call them all.
Right here.
Yeah, sure.
Here.
Here.
Anybody here be the first one? We have somebody at the podium. Let him go first, or?
I was gonna make him wait till the end.
Okay. Like the cable guy?
Yeah. Either between 12 and 6 and show up at 7:00. Um, okay, and um, you have uh, you have control. You can share your screen if you would like to.
Yeah, I'll share my screen here.
For the board, this is Mr. Rick Lombardo with Flock Safety Cameras. We've asked him to come this afternoon to kind of give a brief demonstration of what the Flock cameras do for law enforcement in particular and the how, you know, the importance of those systems helping us keep our communities safe.
Uh, so yes, my name is Rick Lombardo. I'm with Flock Safety. Kind of before I jump in, are there any questions out of the gate from anybody? No, first I'll kind of talk about what a license plate reader is because prior to me starting this job, I had no idea what it was. It's essentially a camera that if when a vehicle drives by, it takes a picture of the vehicle, grabs a license plate and runs it through the National Crime Information Center. Now, if that car is reported stolen, the license plate is stolen, missing person, wanted felon, sex offender, things of that nature, it'll alert your local police department in seven to 15 seconds. So if you know, you go home tonight, your car is stolen, you call the police up, they add it to this national list. So wherever it's found at in the whole, in the whole country, it'll notify that local authorities. Uh, so background, that's kind of what license plate readers are. To talk about how we came about, our CEO, he was the head of his HOA down in Atlanta, did a rash of home burglaries, car break-ins, a couple stolen vehicles. And he did what he thought he was supposed to do. He gets with his neighbors, pulls up all the Ring doorbell, security footage he can get his hands on, puts on a thumb drive, calls them up, and he thinks he solved 98% of the case. Here's a photo of the guy. Here's the times that he came in, the times that he left, pictures of his vehicle, all this photographic evidence. The police branch looked at him, asked if he knew that who that person was. They said, no, we don't know who that person is. We asked people in the community. Nobody can identify who that person is. They say unfortunately, that's the same thing to us as it is to you. That's just a person we don't know in a black truck. Essentially, that live video didn't give any actual evidence to police to actually help solve that crime. Uh, so we asked the department, well, what is it that you need from us to help solve these? Like our community is really getting hit pretty hard and we're willing to invest in it. They said, short of knowing who that person is, the only actual evidence for something like that is to get a license plate off that black truck. Uh, he went out, got a couple quotes for license plate readers for his community. Uh, the lowest quote came in at 700 or $200,000 for seven cameras. Uh, obviously that wasn't going to fly to a local HOA meeting. Uh, good luck getting that passed. Uh, so he's a really sharp guy, uh, young 30s, graduated top of his class, electrical engineer at Georgia Tech. Uh, he wrote up a program with some buddies from college, put in waterproof box, got a couple of iPhones, and they actually caught that black truck when it came back two weeks later. So for the first year to 18 months, we were strictly selling these to local HOAs and really members of the community, not really law enforcement. Uh, we ended up getting a call from a department in Texas stating, hey, we're clearing a ton of our cases with these cameras in residential communities. Could we add some of these to our ingress and egress periods? Uh, then we really started focusing on law enforcement and it's really taken off like a rocket ship since then. Uh, we're in over 3,500 departments nationally, just in the state of Ohio. I was the first employee. I started in July of 2020. We had no cameras up. Uh, today we're working with over three years. We're in 250 departments just in the state of Ohio and work with just about everybody locally, which I'll show you on the map as well. Uh, so it's really exciting how they all took off. Uh, every camera that's been purchased in Ohio is still up today. We haven't taken a single camera out. And the vast majority of agencies end up doubling their amount of cameras after the first year, uh, once they're up and running. To show you how it'll work, you know, I won't go through everything here, but I kind of took this from uh, my home city of Mener. Here's a white Dodge Charger, uh, came in, committed burglary, two males with towed on their faces came in and committed burglary. Right? Uh, so this is how the department is able to utilize that. Uh, instead of having to pull right now, if they don't have a system like this, what they tend to do is they find every white Dodge Charger, 2015 to 2018, four-door white that's registered in Cuyahoga County, and they're probably going to get a list of, you know, 1,000 vehicles and they gotta start whittling down from there. Whereas with, if they have our system up, you're able to put in a day, put in a time, and very quickly we're able to identify that vehicle. Uh, so if we're looking for a white Dodge Charger, you know, in this two-hour timeframe, we're still looking at about 5,000 vehicles. But if we know that Dodge Charger is a car, so we're going to remove uh, trucks, SUVs, minivans, things of that nature. So we're able to take it down from 5,000 just down to 18 that are just cars at this point. And maybe from here, all you, all that was had, the only thing that was described was a white vehicle leaving the scene. You could just see white cars now all the way down as well. And if we know this is a Dodge car, uh, which we do, you can go in here and say, you know, out of the 381, nine are Acuras, two Audis, you know, eight BMWs, 17 Chevys and so on. There are seven white Dodge cars that kind of fit that description. And very quickly, uh, you're able to narrow those down uh, to those white cars that actually fit that description. So there's been a big gap kind of between the uh, Ring doorbells and other security systems out there because they do capture the crime, but they don't give the, the police any actual evidence to actually go after and solve that crime. So then they're able to go in here and say, let's say this is the one. Uh, they have a picture of the vehicle and it pulls the license plate for them, uh, gives the date and the time they hit on that camera. Uh, number of times it hit on that camera in the last 30 days and says, you know, this is a sedan made by Dodge that's white without any detective identifiers. And by identifiers really mean a back rack, top rack, bumper sticker, window sticker. So a lot of things that happened as well, you know, like hit skips, you know, you're at a light, somebody runs into the back you and takes off. Most of the time they're not getting a license plate. They just look up and say, hey, it was like a red Chevy truck that had bumper stickers on the back. You know, it happened at this timeframe, they'll be able to go ahead and say, show me every red truck that had bumper stickers that was driving around in this half hour timeframe. And then they actually have a lead to go off of. Right? So that's on the backend uh, for any of the search capabilities. Any, any questions on this? So that's if a crime occurs, that's how it's utilized on the backend. But we're also very proactive as well. So as I talked about, we're tied into NCIC, so if a stolen vehicle, wanted felon, missing person, anything like that, pulls into your community and passes the camera, it'll make this alert. Makes that alert and then it'll give a zoom in picture, the license plate, a picture of the vehicle and the camera hit on the direction of travel. So whether this is a stolen plate, stolen vehicle, things like that, all the way down, give a zoom in picture of the plate. Uh, stolen vehicle, it's a black Toyota 4Runner at Howell Mill and First Street here. And again, they'll get that in about seven to 15 seconds.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt the question with that, um, with that alarm that goes off. Is that going to be um, that it will alert patrolmen when they're in their car? Or that would be like hooked up to the new um, monitors? So if they're on the station, they would get the alert at the station? Like where would that alert go to?
Hit all the MDT, so all the officers' computers in the car.
Yep, it's up to the department. You, we could do, we could get notified four different ways. You can send it to dispatch with departments do. You can also have it up in the MDT, so it's just something else they log into when they start their day. You also get an email or text message. So at times, you know, they're out of the vehicles, maybe domestic, something like that, but they always have their phone on them. So they can't get a text message as well, and you can do all four at the same time. So you don't have to pick and choose.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, so that's kind of how the technology works broadly, right? So proactively, it's going to scan every vehicle that pulls into your community to see, is it a missing person, stolen vehicle, anything like that? If it is going to obviously alert the police in seven to 15 seconds. And then on the backend, still collecting those photos, it's only storing that information for 30 days. But if a crime occurs and they have a description of a vehicle, they're then able to use the system to identify that vehicle on the backend. In really clear cases, a lot faster. You know, not everything's about stolen cars, major crime. You know, this is uh, the first department that came on with us, Menor on the Lake. Uh, show you, play this video just for, for a moment.
Mounted on front in a quiet neighborhood.
Well, uh, I'll kind of talk through it. Essentially, this kid's riding his bike. Uh, they have a video camera on another bike behind them, a carb, this car pulls through the intersection, uh, runs the kid over. They don't, they don't actually show it. But let me move this out of the way here. As you can see, it is a blue Kia SUV that did it. Uh, they have a very clear picture of the vehicle. But obviously no way to identify that, right? Uh, so the chief said he was able to pull this up very quickly, was able to locate the one Kia SUV, blue Kia SUV that had green and orange tags. Uh, it ended up being a rental car that a 23-year-old girl returned about three hours after rang this kid over. The chief said, knowing what we know now, they would have spent somewhere around 100 to 150 hours investigating that case. And every minute of it would have been a complete waste due to it being a, you know, a rental car that was already returned. Uh, so it's not always about ju- big crimes. Uh, it'll be used in a large amount of investigations and other items that you have in the city here. Uh, to show you how, you know, what, what we have, you know, in the Cleveland area. So this is my house where I live, just drove from there today up in Mener. Uh, so I said, as the first employee in Ohio, uh, so I went, as soon as I got this gig, I called Mener. Big department wasn't willing to talk to me, but Little Men on the Lake, uh, the chief said, hey, I'm having lunch right now. If you want to come up and show me what these are, I'll take a look at them. Essentially walked up there and he bought three cameras. I was super excited. And these were the first three cameras that went live essentially in Ohio in uh, November 2020. And then it just took off like hotcakes and they're just solving crime everywhere. And this is now what the Cleveland area looks like today. We work with just about every single agency in and around the Cleveland area. You know, as of your neighbors, obviously Strongsville, North Royalton, uh, Broadview Heights, Brexville, uh, Richfield, Brunswick, and Medina, all, all are on uh, on with us and sharing information as well.
Down Lowdy, if you showed the rest of Savannah County, down Lowdy and.
Yep, Seville, Lowdy, uh, lot down there, you know, all the way Mansfield, Shelby. Like I said, we're in about 250 different cities just in Ohio. You know, if you're familiar with the Columbus area, work with just about every single city and around the Columbus area as well. Uh, and the reason is just because they're working and solving a lot of crime on a daily basis. Uh, it's a, it's an incredibly cheap tool to use for what the, what you get out of it, which is why the vast majority of agencies are continuing to add cameras each year. Any questions on the map here? I think 10, they might have added a handful more, but they have about 10. Strongsville, I think, just signed on somewhere around 20-ish. The vast majority of agencies have about 20 in and around the Cleveland area. But you're lucky that's not how many you need, you know, like Maple Heights, pretty small community, but they have 32 cameras up. Warrensville Heights has 29, Independence has 31. Uh, this is the map that we came up with for your community. So essentially six cameras, you know, essentially lock in the vast majority of the, the people that'll enter your community here. Uh, so you're lucky that, that you know, you don't have a large amount of different entry points in. Uh, not a lot of freeway exits that you have to cover, things of that nature. So about six cameras would, would cover it. Comparatively speaking. Any question?
Could you just touch on the efficiency of, you know, kind of the chain link of the communities, the more there are in the way that?
Yep. So uh, let's say that I, you, you know, I don't come to Hinkley often, but I did come to your putt-putt place. Meanwhile, I did a few, we, a couple of months back, delicious pizza and everything. Uh, so, but don't come here often. So let's say I did something, uh, now I hit a car and left, right? I did a hit skip. Somebody saw it was a, hey, it was that silver Honda Accord with tinted windows out there. Essentially, your department will then be able to say, hey, this is the one silver car with silver Honda that did it. They have my license plate. Then they can go back 30 days and essentially see everywhere that car has been in 30 days. So they'll say, hey, he just left for Mener, not only in Mener, he lives off 615 in Mener. They'll be able to call the Mener cops, say, hey, we're looking out for Rick Lombardo. Here's his plate. You know, if he's driving around, please pull him over. We want to talk to him. Now Mener can be alerted whenever I'm driving around as well. So all these cities really now are working together and being able to quickly identify either stolen cars, wanted people, or missing people. All types of missing people. Uh, so it's not just crime all the time. Here's like Ashtria County, their sheriff's department, a 12-year-old girl went missing, met a 40-year-old online, uh, got in his car. They were able to track him down to Kentucky, over to Oklahoma, down to Texas and recover that girl in 48 hours. They said without our system, they would have had no idea where she was located. Uh, so it's constantly recover missing people, solving all types of horrendous crimes. And we're just really helping solve crime all over the, the Cleveland area. This is just from, you know, Fox Eight yesterday just ran this story from Euclid and Cleveland Heights. Capturing some stolen vehicles, uh, kind of fleeing in between the two cities.
Automatically networked?
It's not automatically networked, does not automatically. You actually own the data. So Flock does not own any data. We can't force anyone to do anything. Uh, so your community, your, your township actually owns the data. It's up to you whether you actually want to share that or not.
Do most of the players do that?
Everyone in Ohio is sharing currently.
So we have, the way the Flock system has worked, uh, so basically we have, we don't own cameras, obviously. Uh, the company has allowed our department access to that database and use that entire search function for every other, essentially every agency across the country, we've narrowed it down to Northeast Ohio. But we have used their system and that database on several occasions for cases over the last year or two. The downside is their company policy has changed. I thought it was going to be January 1st, but I just learned from Rick that come March 31st, if you are not, if you do not have cameras, if you're not a, a user of this, they're, they're going to cut the access to that database for people that don't, that don't have their own system.
Like Netflix.
Yep. This, yeah, give it to them for free for long enough, right? Uh, so it is, it was something we kind of provided all agencies for free. But we also want to stay in business and you can't stay in business giving away everything for free all the time. Uh, so we do have kind of like minimum contributions that as long as you have a minimum number of cameras, that you're then able to maintain the same level of access. And then it just builds that network and makes it even stronger for the department.
Do you have a, just pay for access?
It's the same cost of getting cameras.
Okay.
So if in theory you're like, we don't want cameras here, but we would like them to still utilize cameras, it would be the same cost as if you purchased five cameras.
Okay. And we're looking at six and just jotting down what we talked about. It's West 130th and 303, Boston and Ridge, Ledge and Ridge, State and River. State and Ledge. And then West 130th and Boston. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, so uh, at a minimum level, I think we had five of them. This is ideally for the primary entrances of the township for the six. So talking about that database, if we had four or less cameras, we would only have access to our, our database, our records. When you hit five cameras or more, you get the access to the national database. So essentially it kind of doesn't make sense to have less than five. On a financial standpoint, if we had to do just five to hit that threshold to have that access, I think we could do that. Again, I think this six would be better. Uh, obviously it could get better from there, but I would say a minimum of five, the six is a little more ideal. Um, I believe Strongsville, I don't know if you can pull it up, but I believe Strongsville and/or Brunswick has one at Bennett's Corners. Brunswick has two at the 71 and 303 ramps, one in, you know, certain directions at each ramp. So um, again, kind of that chain link effect, uh, we have the, we may have those five or six, but it works. Game, see.
Everyone here.
Covered up with the, yeah, Strongsville, Brunswick. Brunswick has several there on 303.
What about, I was thinking of um, um, 130th and Route 3 over by 71.
So the one, and I was part of the um, conference call with their company where it's actually pretty complex. They have a way, because they are solar powered, they have a way of seeing if the sun angle is sufficient to power the cameras, et cetera. And the one that we discussed, um, what is it? Here at 30606 was kind of dual purpose. I believe they agreed that they'd be able to place it to where it was catching both, where you'd be able to tell if they were continuing up 606 or down 3. So that one was kind of nice. It was dual purpose.
Okay.
Yep. Think this camera, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so essentially where we placed it, we're trying to be able to capture the left turn lane and straight, so.
Turn lane, you kind of know that they continue down 606 or is it, they're in the right lane.
Okay.
Been down 3.
I was just thinking that's, I mean, right where the highway is, that would probably be important to know.
They are unidirectional and you guys have a philosophy on why they're catching ingress versus egress, right?
Yeah, well, the reason I, I think ingress is important because essentially if you have them facing outward, you miss half of what the value of the camera is, right? It proactively alerts you to people that you prefer not to be in your community, probably with stolen cars and wanted felons. Whereas they would only get notified then, once they came in, did something and then left. All they would get notified is, hey, a stolen car was here and then left comparative to catching on the way in before it has a chance to yank on car handles, break into other cars, steal other vehicles.
And that's the benefit of the more communities surrounding us to have it, which luckily we are surrounded by quite a few, you know.
So.
Check out cameras and you kind of get that drag in the street.
Yeah, so the vast majority of agencies, they just kind of covered their own ingress periods. If everybody kind of did that, then you kind of have your own ingress points. And then if they go to, you know, whether it's Brexville or wherever, Strongsville, you'll know when they pass that camera, when they enter that jurisdiction.
Okay.
Any?
Obviously, to your point, to hit all of them, there'd be, you know, Plural on 130th would be an ingress. Babcock, you know, we've got quite a few, but this is kind of the, the primary.
Major area. Does Medina have this also, did you say? Okay.
Yeah, Medina has it as well.
So everybody's surrounding us minus the other townships. So Sharon and Granger do not have it.
Bath Township has them uh, down here in Summit County, but yeah, Medina, Medina has them and uh, Monville Township has a, yep. They are, I'm talking with Tennessee over there, so. Uh, that one is Medina Township, oh, they do got it. Uh, it's in planning though, so that one's not signed yet. What?
Location on that?
Let me zoom in on that. Wayman Road, southbound.
Yeah, where?
Oh, it's right by the highway.
Foskett. Is it before, oh, Foskett, okay. That's by our patrol.
Yep. But the things I do want to hit on is that you own the data, which is important, like Flock doesn't have any ownership of it, control over anything like that. The data is only stored for 30 days. Uh, the only way to store it longer would be one, there's additional costs, but only city councils would be the ones to vote on that, for that. So if the police department wants it, we actually wouldn't honor that. It has to be on a democratically elected body to store it longer than 30 days.
How does that work with record retention? This, I mean, this is a record retention.
I could speak to that a little, again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. So I know this is more of a legal piece, but what other attorneys have said is that until you download it and save it, it's not actually yours. So even though it's being collected, it's still up in the cloud. So until you download and save it towards a case file, it's not actually part of a, a record that can be requested. Now, once it's downloaded and saved, it would be part of an ongoing investigation more than likely. And then you're probably not turning that over for that reason.
Well, you're still retaining it.
Once we download it and we retain it in a harder version, then it falls under record retention. While it's still up in the cloud, and the reason that it belongs to us is because of leads roles. That's why they, they can't, it doesn't belong to them, it belongs to us.
So who has the power to, who has the authority to download it?
We do.
So you would want your officers to know not to download anything unless it's part of an active.
Yeah, essentially they wouldn't save anything unless it was.
That goes along with our body cameras, car cameras and.
Everything like that. You have a overall policy on.
Strictly regulated to our job function.
And I would think that it's important that the public is aware, aware of that. So they're not making records requests on it.
Yeah, we, we have done very few records requests and I don't mean that in like a sly way, as in just like.
Talking to Hinkley, so.
Yeah, you know, yes, you know, yes. I, I understand, you know.
Kind of.
I've been, I've been to communities where like, oh, we, we had to hire somebody for three people here because they want, they request everything every day. Uh, so I understand that does happen places. Uh, the other piece I want to touch on is that there's no personal identifiable information in our platform as well, right? Uh, the same way that you can see license plates out here, but you can't physically tie that to a person. Only law enforcement can do that again through leads. That's the same with our system, right? So it's just collecting pictures of license plates, but there's no way to look up a person. So you can't say, what's Rick Lombardo? Look him up. You'd have to know my license plate. Uh, so that, those are the big things, I think, for, for council, for the community to know that you own the data. It's only stored for 30 days. Uh, only law enforcement has access to it as well. Uh, so even I can't look it up, right? So even as an employee, they could call me and say, hey, Rick, our internet's down and we need a picture of this red truck. We know it just went through here. Can you look at camera one and pull it? I can't do that. I won't have access, right? You have to be CEGIS certified. Uh, and again, no, no personal identifiable information. Any questions, concerns from anyone?
And they're just constantly, right? It's not like a motion activated.
It is motion activated. So that's what actually triggers the, it to take a picture. Uh, so it is motion activated, which is good to get down a little more. Most LPRs are just using infrared technology to bounce off a physical license plate. Ours is motion activated, which allows us to capture things like no tag and temporary tags. So most LPRs miss those. So a lot of times with legacy LPR, if you knew you were committing a crime, you just cover up your license plate, put tape over it, cover it up, take it off, go commit that crime and leave. And like, that car is essentially a ghost. Uh, with ours, we're still going to capture that make, build color in that vicinity at that time, then they're able to go back and view that. So if, uh, give me a second here, I'll show you, give you an example here. This is actually an armed robbery suspect out in California, uh, held up a gas station, but we know by looking at that car, that's a gray BMW coupe. So one, we still took that photo because of the motion, not just because obviously there's no plate for us to grab that. But then by looking at it, we can say, hey, that's a gray BMW coupe. Go in and show me every other gray BMW coupe that drove past here in the last two days or whatever. And this is him driving by, you know, a few hours earlier, uh, scouting the job out, registered to parole in your, by city, they were able to pick him up that same day. So being motion activated is, is important. And we're also not ticketing. We're no ticketing cameras. Uh, I know that gets asked a lot. I know anytime a camera goes up, that uh, the community immediately thinks that they're going to get tickets in the mail. Uh, we do no ticking. We're not red lights, we're not stopped, we're none of that. Uh, we're really only here to help solve crime.
They do that when the signs go up.
Bane of my existence telling people I sell cameras to law enforcement and then every one of them thinks I'm selling the ticketing cameras.
I think the other important thing, uh, the way that their structure, it is an annual fee, but that they, there's no maintenance. They do all, all the repairs, if there's upgrades, if the batteries are solar needs replaced, that's all on them. There's no extra cost to us for any of the, the maintenance or care of the, of the.
Correct, yep, correct. So if a camera goes down in 18 months from being through two winters out there, we just come out and put up a new one. You're not in charge of replacements, anything like that. And with the annual cost, it is the hardware, software. Uh, each camera is essentially LTE, which we pay for, their storage costs, things of that nature as well.
And what is the cost for five cameras?
Uh, it's $3,000 per camera per year with a one-time installation cost. And that can range anywhere from as low as $150 to install. Two are the most expensive is if we're putting on a state route, unfortunately in townships. Uh, the DOT requires us to use a special pole, uh, that's 1,250 bucks for installation, if we have to use our own pole.
So did you run numbers? Where are you at?
We have not run our numbers.
Thank you for coming out.
No problem. Any other questions for anybody?
I've got a number of questions.
Yeah.
Um, neither for nor against.
Because it's recorded, we have to use my compass.
Maybe for or against us, to be honest with you, but I had one question about the impact of darkness, rain, flocks, no weather on the ability of the cameras to
Yep.
Clump with useful information.
Yep. Yeah, so at, at night it is harder to get the make, build color. So a lot of what we do is if it, chances are, most of the time they drove past the camera previously somewhere in the daytime. So we can know like, if it was mine, like we know that license plate is a silver Honda Accord.
Um, and this is for anybody, uh, you know. Considering the values, how many incidents in Hinkley do you think would have been affected had you had a system like this in place? That's a hard question, but there's got to be some kind of idea.
Off the top of my head, Jim, it, it's hard to tell because we have things that take place, you know, catalytic converters being stolen out of parking lots off of 130th. So, you know, our occasional residential burglary. So it's really hard to put a hard number on that, but.
You know, it's some number.
I, I would say quite a bit. I would say, you know, over the years, there's been simple calls. You know, we, in the summertime, we get complaints for, uh, you know, a guy in a red pickup truck with a freezer in the back of his truck trying to sell you meat, right?
Golf cart.
And, and we don't have any registered transient vendors. A bunch of people tell us that red truck with that in the back of, you know, or we, or to his story initially, we've got all, you know, a lot of people have home cameras now. And we got all kinds of pictures of this red truck and this guy doesn't do anything for us. With that system in place, we search that red truck. And more than likely, we felt figure out who that truck is and want either verify, is it just a guy trying to sell meat? He didn't get a permit? Or is this somebody trying to case your house? You know, there's a lot of those types of scenarios where I think would have been hugely helpful. I was asking a couple of the road guys the other day. We probably have two or three cases just in the last six months that, that block was assistance in. Our patrolman did help Brunswick just two weeks ago solve a hit skip crash that happened on 303 that the block, they really picked up and catch them here in Hinkley. So I think it'd be more than we think would be my opinion.
Oh, yeah. We, we just had the, the kids turfing the ball fields, you know.
That's what I was thinking.
There's any number of things that, you know, hit skip accidents to vandalism to burglaries. You know, thefts of, you know, cars being broken into.
And that ability will be taken away as of March 31st. We've had it, we've had it as a courtesy for free and as of March 31st, it'll be gone.
And for those minor things, like I said, the, you know, the, the truck stop and anger house, those would be great to solve more than likely ease of minds to confirm, but you know, God forbid, we ever have a major situation where an abduction or something that it could be invaluable.
And to tag along to that question, you know, in cities or communities that are surrounding this area that have had this system in place for a reasonable period of time. One of the things that I would look at from a business standpoint, you've got to be able to have some kind of measurable. Do you see any measurable reductions? I shouldn't say reductions in crime, but incidents that were solved that probably otherwise wouldn't have been solved. I mean.
Oh, yeah, that. That list is incredibly long. Like that list is incredibly long for all cities.
So it is a measurable thing that if the question were asked, you know, you could ask in about a typical city that had this in place. What, what were the, the incident rates that were solved versus now, which are should, should be solved even to a greater degree.
What I get asked all the time is how to like show the financial value, which I sounds similar to what you're asking. Say like, is it worth X dollar amounts? And that, that's really hard to be honest. I'm the number one guy that would love to be able to have something in here that says, hey, every dollar you spend on flock, it's going to save you 10. Right? I would love to have that. I think it's just very hard to put on that. To be honest, I've actually just talked with Akron PD about this this week. Because they're trying to show the value. They bought 130, 145 cameras. So, you know, they're paying $400,000 a year and want to be able to show, hey, that, how is this valuable? And it's just hard to do that because what I would need to know is like, how much time and effort is in one of those hit skip cases or is in one of those, you know, that hit and hit and run? You know, the example that I had, you know, of the, the boy that got run over, you know, that chief said it saved him 150 hours of investigations. So I need to know like, what is that cost of 100 hours of investigation to the city versus clearing that thing up and, you know.
I wouldn't be as much interested in the dollar savings as in the reduction. Other, you should have a downward reduction or a more favorable result in incidents that are solved, something like that. In other words, I'm looking for some kind of measurable.
This is.
I know one of these guys is going to ask about that.
So this is Cobb County? They did a study? Like, obviously it's hard for flock to do studies on a city, right? So we have to rely on other jurisdictions to do that. Cobb County, they had our cameras up for six months and this is what they saw. They saw 63% reduction in residential burglaries like in the beat, but even as the precinct as a whole, the robberies fell 40% once the cameras.
Okay, last question. Is your system that retains all this data, has it ever been hacked? Has it ever been misused?
Misused, probably, probably, right? I, not that I would know about that. But yeah, like in theory, do I think every single police officer in the country that uses this has never used it appropriately? Like, I don't think so. I assume somebody is using it inappropriate.
My question would be is when somebody gets divorced and they're, they're going to go and ask the chief here.
Yep.
Did you see a car with license plate XYZ exit Hinkley on whatever?
Yep.
Because the, send the ex-wife wants to know whether that person, that's a kind of nuisance things that generate records requests and
Yep.
things that have nothing to do with criminality.
Just because somebody asked us to do it. There would have to be a specific law enforcement driven purpose if you so.
Law enforcement driven purpose?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because Mrs. Smith wants to know if the ex-husband's girlfriend's leaving town, that's not going to.
It's not a civil.
Just like Jim, unless I'm, unless I'm mistaken, I don't like law enforcement, they can't just pull up leads and start running any license plate they want. I mean, if, if they, you know, were off on Saturday and they saw some, some guy running a stop sign, they can't go back on Monday and run that plate if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly, you have to be there to witness it right then and there. So.
The CEGIS system and NCIC, we have your annual certifications and there's, it's very strictly monitored that, yeah, we, we cannot run anybody through any of those systems for anything but law enforcement purpose.
Yeah.
But to your point, your point, Jim, that people make mistakes and do dumb things.
Yeah.
And then you have to address it at that point.
And I would say like, we, we could get like policies, APL policies over as well. We got a bunch of sample policies of like how it should be used in the department and things like that. Because I would say the, the difference though, and you know, to what you're talking about, it is illegal to use leads inappropriately, right? Technically, it's not, this is not illegal to use inappropriately like he's stating, right? It would be a policy at the department. So he wouldn't, if an officer did do, do that, he wouldn't be in jail, but he would be fired if that makes sense. Right?
You know, they're very concerned about an overabundance of records requests.
Yep.
You know.
We, we get very few records requests is the number one thing. One of the top three things people are worried about and get asked all the time. Like I, I would be surprised if we've done 10 in Ohio in three years. The vast majority that gets asked. The last, the vast majority that gets asked, it's like, hey, it's from a, you know, it's from an attorney and they're asking for all this information from February and you're like, oh, that data's been gone for six months. Because we only store the data for 30 days a lot of times.
To your point about someone hacking their system, their system does not capture a license plate, then run it and put Jim Larson's information and all this driver's information in their database. All it is is a picture of the car. And what they hit on is very specific. They just, their system just doesn't pull up everything about Jim Larson. If your car is stolen, it hits on a stolen file and that's it.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I see a lot of benefits and I see a lot of issues, you know. Some people that are going to hate this idea. Some people are going to like it. Frankly, I think I kind of like all the good outcomes that can come from it. But I'm always worried about those unanticipated consequences that nobody thought about when you put all this stuff in. So.
Yep.
But because they're so ubiquitous all over the place, these people are a lot smarter than me. I already, I've had to ask a lot of these questions.
Yeah, that's what, it's one of the reasons I think we're so private because like a lot of the, the concerns are, are alleviated once you have it up. Like we don't get an abundance of records requests. The vast majority, I don't know anyone that's used it illegally in Ohio yet. And I'm sure that would have trickled to me if something would have happened, but.
Thank you.
Is the 30 days a rolling 30 days or calendar?
Yep, it's a rolling 30 days. So every, every day, it just, the previous day rolls. Previous 30 day rolls off. And there is not, we do not keep it one more day. The number of calls I get on day 32 saying like, hey, do you have an extra day? I, I don't. I cannot get that no matter what you're asking. It is gone. It is hard to lead it. I cannot get it back for you no matter how much they request it.
Any else?
Any questions, concerns, anything else?
Thanks very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief, anything else for us?
I do really quickly on run down through a little bit of what we, what we're looking at for the coming year. I want to get with Mike Bahari and tour our range. The, the building down there is in need of some repair. It's, time is taking its toll a little bit on that building. I'd like to see what, as time allows, I'm pretty sure they have the skill level to do what we need done down there. It's just that they have the time to do it. So that, that was one of the things I wanted to talk to Mike about. I was hoping he was going to be here today, but I will get with him in the next couple of days and see if we can get together to discuss that. But there's just some things that need, we've got raccoons and rats and things you're just because.
They're at the range, right?
Access points that needs backfilling.
The trees around the valley, cut back, duders. You know, they, they did a lot of work down there for us over the last couple of years, putting in the grindings and getting the road cleaned up and spraying, keeping the weeds down. But we're to the point where we need a little bit, we're a little bit past that now. So I'll get with Mike and see what that looks like for them. And obviously as time allows in their schedule, because they have other responsibilities, but I, I really don't want to go outside of the township to accomplish some of that if we don't have to. We are looking at a number of projects within the building, you know, obviously we are not adding on to the building or building a new facility anytime soon at this point. So we are gathering quotes and ideas on new flooring throughout the building, painting the inside of the building, updating some of our office furniture. So those are, those are projects that we're working on it again as time allows and getting some quotes together to kind of spruce up the inside of the building a little bit. We are looking at upgrading our, our mobile data terminals in the cars. We've got some that are reaching end of life. We're going to have, you know, some purchases on that over the next coming months. Our computers within the building, when I became chief almost six years ago, we updated a good number of the computers with inside the building. But again, you know, their end of life is starting to approach. So we're going to, we're going to take some time to look at those and see what we need to do with that. We did, Sergeant Sted interviews last week on a number of applicants for, to refill the vacancy that we currently have. And we've identified a young man that used to work for Canton Police Department. And they really like him. I've met him briefly, so we're going to start a background investigation on him and we'll see where that goes. I'm confident it will turn out, you know, favorable. So that's the update on filling that position as well.
Is it filling the vacancy or replacing that?
It, it's filling the vacancy.
Okay.
That we recently had.
Okay. You don't need any cars or anything this year?
I would say at this point, no, Martha, I think we'll be in good shape because the, the two that we got somewhat unexpectedly at the end of the year, we won't even start putting those together for several months. We still have to bid out the equipment to put into them and get that approved and get on the schedule for it to happen. So by the time we cycle through these four cars and getting them into service, we should be okay for this year.
So two cars will need the equipment, right?
That is correct.
Two of them, the board had already approved and we already purchased the equipment. Actually, one of them is in the process of being built as we speak. The other one is going to be going down in the very near future. But then, yeah, those other two are kind of pending until we get that equipment ordered for them.
But we, we've had to juggle what's coming out of service recently. We've got one of our, one of our Ford Explorers that was due to come out later in the year is having some mechanical issues that we just don't want to put the money into it. So it's coming out sooner than later. So that, that changes things a little bit.
Did you mention vests to uniform our both professors? Wait, that's covered.
I believe several, you can probably confirm, I think several people purchased last year. A lot of people were expired. So I think the vast majority of those are covered.
Okay. So there won't be any big expenses.
There should not be, no.
Okay.
That's kind of the short overview of what we're looking at as we, we head into 2024.
And no retirements coming up, right? Who knows?
Not within the next 60 days, how's that?
No big payouts?
No big payouts.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody's.
Very noncommittal.
Yeah. Outside of obviously me at some point, Jim's probably the next one, if you'll ever let him retire. But he's, he'd probably be the next one, I think.
Asher or golf?
Asher. Golf doesn't have anywhere near enough time to retire.
Yeah, Asher doesn't either. I mean, he thinks he does. He thinks he does, but.
So no, to answer your question, no, Martha, I think we'll, we'll get through this year just fine.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have a quote yet. One of the things that I was looking at was deciding for your building. And Mike just wants you to know if he gets a good deal on pink siding. I mean, that might be what it is, you know, but.
Couldn't we rename the building at the same time or?
Well, I don't know what it'll cost to put those back up, so maybe. We'll figure it out.
We would just police department?
Maybe.
Pink siding, what, pink, what, like maybe purple lettering, David Sentner.
No.
Pink, huh?
Any other questions for these guys?
Nope. Well, and to your point on the siding, I know we are looking at those front steps and there, there is some masonry work that needs to be dealt with maintenance wise on the front of the building too. So.
Yeah.
The, the hard part is finding somebody to come out and actually give you a quote to do the work. And it's just, nobody really wants to do anything anymore. It's actually.
Just a quick update, the ZAR camera, the upgraded security camera system has been installed. It's up and running. It's great improvement.
Yeah, it's, it's nice.
Is he still with them, ZAR?
Trying to think, Mr. ZAR, first name is escaping me.
I don't think it's Gene.
I don't think it's Gene.
He, he was, he was older than me, so probably, probably, he's probably in Florida.
Probably, smart man.
Yeah.
Wait, stop over and yeah, it, the, the quality of the cameras is day and night compared to what we had. The way we've got them set up, you actually see the cars come in, come across the front of our building, that south end of this building, through the parking lot, through that parking lot in the back. Cars coming up out of the back of the building and up the ramp, you, you know, past the park. So it's, it came out nice.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Gentlemen, have a great weekend.
Have a good evening. It is the wish list meeting, so I guess he's wishing it was.
We just got to get Martha to find the money. That's all. See, she's smiling.
Mr. Pearl's.
I will talk to you tomorrow, Martha.
Yep.
Yes, bye bye.
Sure.
Want to come up and talk to us or? Going to sit around? Okay. There you go, money. Go ahead.
Okay. So a couple of things that things I wanted to touch on. First of all, does not, this is just work session related. But wondering if you both had an opportunity to review the letter from the prosecutor's office that we will discuss at our meeting next week, but I'm wondering if there were any recommended changes in that?
No.
I'm okay with.
Okay.
Is it the, the one that?
That is the one that he sent.
Yeah.
That's the one he sent. Yep. Okay. That was it. We will, we can vote on that at the meeting next week, what we're going to do with that. All right. So I had presented about a year ago, an option of you know, doing some, some solar at some of the township buildings, which the, the company did not get back to me based off of when I reached out to them again this year. So I still have the numbers that they provided for us last year. I'm going to assume that the prices have gone up. I'm sorry, I did not print this for, for you guys either, but to give you an idea of using solar panels on this building on Town Hall. As of a year ago, the cost of that was $52,000. As of a year ago, um, the cost of that was $52,000. There, and I can email this to you both, so that you both have this, this, um, at your fingertips. But it was $52,000 to do this building, which, um, is probably the one that they would be able to get the most amount of panels on and it would, um, yield the highest return along with a federal rebate of $15,500.
Off of the 52 or?
Off of the 52. Often, but don't go with hard numbers on these because, um, so it says then the net cost after the rebate would be 36,000, 36 and change.
Are these a, a dollar rebate? They're not like a tax rebate?
It is dollar.
Okay, so we would get a, a physical check or deduction?
Right, but, and what I still want to ensure is that we're still eligible for these. So that's why I'm giving like the hard number of the 52,000, just for planning purposes if we are going to do this.
Cause residential program is a, is a deduction, i- if I'm not mistaken, right? But this is different.
This is, this was different, yeah, this was different than the residential, yes. 20-year warranty, um, zero charge for service calls for a 20-year period. So that's kind of what I was looking at for, um, this building. And then we had also talked about, um, doing the fire department. We did not think last year that the police department was, um, a good candidate for it because of all the trees around there. And then we'd have to talk again about, um, service department. But just to give you an idea.
Trees would have no effect.
Trees that have no effect, okay.
It's this window, it's not that window.
Okay.
Between 10:30 and 2:30 in the afternoon.
Well, to give you, um, an idea, if we did the, um, fire department, police department and town, town hall combined for the solar, we would be looking at, again, last year prior to these numbers, which I'm sure have had inflation, is, um, 229,600, like $230,000 would be the cost to do the solar. I will email this to both of you so that you have that, but that's kind of.
Be a rebate on that then?
There would be a rebate on that as long as the rebate still applies. So I'd rather go high. Spend low.
You had your chance.
I'm asking for another one.
We'll call on the public at the end of the meeting, sir.
Isn't this the end? So what are you going to do with the electricity if you, on this building? Our, our electric bill is, for the town hall is the lowest.
The highest electric bill is?
Fire and police.
And the police station. Those are, uh, the fire department is right around 800. I would say average 750, 800 a month. Over there, it ranges anywhere from five to six to 650 if the air conditioning's going.
The two big uses are the fire department and the, uh, police department.
And the service department's minimal, we're a couple hundred average.
But the service department has the best roof.
I don't know where they draw their power from. Does it feed from here and we could put the panels here if, if that was the issue?
There, no, that's why we can't put a generator, that, that's why we can't use their generator.
Oh.
The parking lot. I, I, I'm not an electrician, but I do know the reason we can't use their generator and hook it up and have anything going on. Has something to do with that big slab of concrete right there. I would imagine the same issue might arise trying to feed a. I don't have the answer.
Oh, I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just trying to. Uh, but I would advise you to contact those three companies that 350 Hinkley told you about. And see what they think. I'm not even sure what the name of the company was that you did use. But I would suggest those three and see where they, and show them your electric bills and let them tell you.
Right.
What's possible.
Uh, the company, um, this was Solar is Freedom from last year. That we used, which I did see your email, thank you for resending that as a refresher with those companies. Which I would certainly, I would reach out to, the more the merrier. I mean, because we want to get as many, um, quotes as we can to, to be competitive, right? And to give you an idea, we did do that with this one. We did give them, um, electric bills, so they did say, you know, what we would save in the first year by, by going to the solar. So we would provide all of that and get, um, as much information as we could. To the best of my understanding, this was, um, just kind of our first meeting to kind of have a meeting of the minds and see if everybody's, um, you know, can we, can we pick the top three that we want to accomplish? Maybe checking off the list, but I will definitely reach out to those, thank you.
Richard, can I just, cause you have written in here a 30% federal tax credit.
Uh, I shouldn't have put the word tax in there.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, again, I'm, I'm just making.
There was discussion over, somebody wanted it in there. I didn't want it in there.
Now.
Because you don't have, the township doesn't pay taxes.
That's what, that's my issue.
Can I ask Mr. Pearl a question or?
Up at the microphone. You can take the microphone back there for both of you, it's just you two, so you don't have to keep getting up. But it will pick up on everything you say.
Hit the red button when you're done talking, that's all.
This is what keeps them quiet.
Hit the red button, hit the.
No, no.
It's green, you can talk, it's red, you can't.
Now it's red. Now it's green.
Okay. Question. If the proposal to add solar for this building, it's just would be for this building, the old fire station in here, is that right? What kind of an area would a battery farm be to support this? Would it be extraordinary, would it be inconsequential?
Oh, it would fit, it would fit in that closet.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't realize it'd be that small.
And that would give you three to six, nine days depending on how many batteries you wanted.
Last question would be, would it be possible to put a solar array on this building? And if the issue of the concrete dry, uh, walkway, could you actually feed the other building with excess power from here? Would, would this be enough surface area to generate power for not only this building, but the other building, do you think?
I'm not an electrician, I don't work for Ohio Edison.
That would be, that would be a real.
I don't know if Ohio Edison would allow you to export the power.
To another building?
Yeah.
So it's just meant for?
Maybe, because it's one, I'm assuming this is one lot.
It's one address.
One address, okay.
Both buildings.
But I, I don't know.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Okay, um, before we.
So, I'm not to interrupt, but I just did. If we're considering that, I would like it done in conjunction with a roof for the.
That was my next point.
And I didn't say anything.
Okay. Before we, uh, even consider doing solar panels on this building, this building would need a new roof. So, um, I did reach out to a local company and had them, um, give me a quote on what it would cost and to do tear off, repair, um, new shingles, everything on this, this roof, remove the debris, all of that, um, we're looking at $66,000 to redo the roof. So that 66 would be in addition to, um, the first number of going solar.
What was, what was the total solar, was it 232?
230. 230, 229, 230.
What happens if a roof needs replaced while you have solar?
You have to remove the panels.
But then you can just install them.
Remove and then put it in a pile, they would build a platform, put it in a pile, fix the roof and then come back.
Okay, so it's not a major, I, I was just thinking the police station, that, that roof is.
230.
It would make sense to reshingle anything you're planning to do, because the solar panels.
Solar panels will last over 30 years. At 30 years, they may be down to about 85% production, but they're still working. The thing is that in 30 years, the efficiency will be better. So at some point, maybe, maybe even at 20 years or 25 years, the efficiency might be so much better that you might want to replace the panels. And, and maybe even use less panels to second.
Is that building isn't too far behind?
Right.
This building, just for consideration.
So maybe, um, just something to keep in mind, maybe even redoing that roof at the same time?
Well, Richard said that would be the wise, practical.
Okay. Okay.
But you weren't even thinking of putting them on the police department, were you?
Well, that was what my person said, but.
I thought it was.
I have a local expert.
I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Into the podium, he said, no, it would be great.
I thought it was Town Hall and, uh, Fire. The quote you have.
Yeah, Town Hall, Fire and Service.
The, the quote that I have is for Town, he, I have the, that 230 is for the police department, the fire department and Town Hall, not service. Police. And I will email it to you so that you will, um, you'll have everything.
And then what percent of the monthly electric bills would it cover? That's a crucial number.
What do you, what?
How much energy is it?
Right.
Is it covering the entirety of the electric bill is?
No, um, it's probably covering half, because a lot of our electric bills are streetlights, um, of, you know, Memorial Park is kind of outrageous that what it's talking.
You have what, 25 electric bills?
Yeah, yeah, so as I said, that averages, let's just say 600. Fire department averages 800. This building usually maybe 279, 250, right around there, depending on air conditioning use. So that's about half our monthly expenses, usually I would say roughly $3,000 overall on electricity.
I do recall him telling me also, when we talked about this last year, um, like the building, like Town Hall would produce so much that we could sell it back to the grid also. Like we would, we would produce more than we would need for Town Hall.
You never want to overproduce or you're, then you are a producer and you're treated like you're a coal or gas or hydro plant. And they pay you a penny a kilowatt.
Okay.
So you always want to generate 90% of your power.
Okay.
That you can consume and not go over the 100.
Okay.
There's just no payback.
If the board, if the board is in, um, agreement, but you know, this is something that we all want to look into, I will definitely be in contact with your three, with, uh, Hinkley 350s.
Okay.
Three suggestions. Um, the other couple of items that I had is.
While you're on that, just keep in mind, depending on the scope of this, you need to be careful because you're going to have to competitively bid it if it exceeds $75,000. So you want to develop an apples to apples comparison for these companies so that you don't tank the competitive bidding process.
Okay. Uh, the other things that I would like to see done, um, are just some general improvements, um, to the administrative building, the, the front half of this building. I would like to see, um, I know we talked about this in the past, like new carpeting, but I was thinking something that might make a little bit more sense for us would be moving to like a luxury vinyl tile flooring, something that, um, you know, it, it has padding with it, so it's not a loud, not like a loud, um, tile floor, um, there. They have a really good commercial grade, um, luxury vinyl tile floors that a lot of restaurants use. I know Foster's, um, Foster's has one that it's, you know, it doesn't scratch, it doesn't, um, it's waterproof. So I would like to see new flooring done throughout this portion of the building. And, and averaged, the, um, price that I got from a contractor who came out here and looked at it, said we would be looking at about $60,000 to tear out this flooring and then install a, uh, good commercial grade luxury vinyl tile. We would be looking at about $60,000.
Is it the entire building, all the carpeting?
That is the entire building, yes. So that is all of the offices, the bathrooms, um, the zoning office, the admin office, it's the entire building we would be looking at. Um, then also to paint the interior while we're replacing the flooring, paint the interior of this, um, for the material and the labor. Things that I would like to see done, um, you know, maybe remove our welcome window that we have over here. Um, and the partitions that were set up during COVID, so we would have to do a little bit of, um, you know, spackling and repair to the walls. So I figured that was about $3,000 for labor and material. And then, um, just to, I don't really recommend replacing the curtains or the balances, but maybe, um, if we replace the blinds, you know, a lot of times now you can get those blinds made, um, very inexpensively, um, that fit right into the window and they kind of have like a magnetic balance that goes over them. So you're not even dealing with cloth or anything like that that gets dusty that needs to be cleaned. So that's what I have on my list for this building. And then the last item I have on my list is, um, the old fire station and the senior room. You know, I know there's been talk in the last maybe three or four years about, um, renovating that, turning it into like, um, a banquet space, you know, that people could rent for weddings and things like that. I just, I don't necessarily know that I see that as being a realistic goal anytime in the next 10 to 15 years of, um, you know, utilizing the space for something like that, but we do use it for community events. We use it for the Memorial Day Parade, um, they use it for the tree lighting, um, that the Chamber of Commerce does. Hinkley Arts and Crafts, you know, we use it a lot for community events, that room. And, uh, when we're doing the carpeting, I would say the senior room also should be replaced. So what I was kind of interested in viewing is something similar to what the police department did, where they just went over the concrete floor, not not doing that design that they did, um, I don't know if that would really flow. But, um, just to give you an idea, like something like this is what I was thinking of doing to the floor. Something like that.
Or just the bay areas and then do?
I have both. Um, I, I had them look at both to see if we wanted to just do the bay area, because this is concrete, so you can drive on this, you can park on this. We can get it so that it's textured, so that it's not going to be that super smooth surface, you know, if it gets wet. That was what I stressed to him, uh, which I know the police department's is much more smooth. I said, I would want to make sure that we have grit to it, so that there's some friction, don't have to worry about people falling. But they would, uh, replace, um, sorry, repair the patches of the floor specifically in the old fire department. There's, um, some cracks that would need to be repaired, um, the drains need some repair work, there's a big bar. Um, the drains need some repair work, there's a big bar that goes right through the floor in the middle of the room. They would remove that and um, patch that. So to do something like that, to do um, to do the entire area, the bathrooms, the hallway, the senior room, ripping out that carpeting, um, the bays, everything to do that from start to finish, we would be looking at uh, seventy-four thousand dollars to do something like that with the flooring choices that I selected, um, there are literally two hundred different colors.
Seventy-four thousand is, is this using the concrete application everywhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Using it everywhere. And I just thought that that would um, make it a little bit nicer there when you have those community events. Um, I just look at trip hazards when there are things like that, you know, like that bar that goes across the floor. Worry about that, somebody tripping and hurting themselves on that. Oh, and by the way, this was not including going into like the closets in there, because um, there's like three closets in the old, yeah, in the old service, in the old fire department. Yeah, where like they heat the Christmas trees um, for the police shop with the cop. Um, there's three closets in there and I said, don't factor in, don't factor doing those because we wouldn't need those to be. So that's what I have so far, and I will uh, send these to you all, so you have the um, electronic version.
Is that the same company that quoted this in here or not different?
Different. Different, they don't do, um, so this was the one that did the um, police department, they only do the concrete. They don't do um, the, the tile or anything like that.
See the tile, the senior room and the bathroom and that.
Which we could do.
Yeah.
I, we, I, we could do that also. I just thought, um, I, I was thinking, um, just thinking slips, trips and falls, right? Is that um, if you do something like this out there, it's all um, smooth. So you don't have to worry about lips or anything like that.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
So I met with um, Mike Perry and Suzanne, talk about paving cemeteries, Maple Hill and Ridge. And um, Mike is still pretty confident that those two uh, can be done for under seventy-five thousand. So I think that was an estimate that was provided maybe last year, and I think that would be still a good um, estimate to target. Um, he's going to um, look at a couple of different scenarios, um, including overlay paving and chip and seal. The Ridge Cemetery may not be eligible to be paved simply because it might be too hard to get the equipment up that drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and with the way three oh three is, so that may have to be chip and seal. But uh, we also talked about, uh, I know there was some other discussion last year about expanding or widening a driveway. And it was felt um, really by everyone that we did not need to do a two-lane um, drive coming in and out. Um, but there was um, a concern about a right angle turn going into the main drive, uh, because there's a tree on the other side. Mike suggested that uh, the service department could possibly do out like a foot on each side of a new drive, lay in gravel. To kind of number one, level things out. Um, and then that would just be an extra buffer, so if a car kind of went off pavement, it would just still be going on gravel. So that's um, one thing we're looking at, probably won't get quotes till later this spring for sure. Um, the other thing is um, Suzanne and I talked about the holding building, the uh, slate roof that's coming apart. Um, and I guess there needs to be some tuck pointing done on that building. Now, I know there was a, a number thrown out last year to um, reserve like ten thousand. But the one quote that I have that was received last year indicates more like seventeen thousand, so I don't know where that ten came from. So I think it would be a little bit more than ten. And again, uh, that's one quote, uh, there would need to be a couple of quotes to look, to look at as well as um, whether the vendor would want to reclaim the old slate to get a deduct on that. But that's something.
And is that seventeen thousand if we replace it with slate instead of asphalt?
That's correct, that's correct.
I think, I think maybe that's where the ten came from. I think we had talked about maybe just replacing with asphalt.
Well, uh, you know, there's no quote for that, and um, I know back in December, it was stated, request was made to keep ten in there for the holding house, but that ten, you know, um, the month before, there's a quote for seventeen. So I, I think that, you know, that's still something to be really drilled down a little bit more because you've got a couple of slate manufact- or installers here in northeast Ohio. And again, um.
Is that the desire to maintain slate?
I think that would be the preference because, you know, that's a um, a building that was erected, I think possibly eighteen nineties. Um, it's kind of very, um, it's a place of respect. And um, I mean, slate has a hundred-year life. If it, it's to be unfeasible, it would be worth looking at. You know, the, the manufactured slate type thing to see. Um, I think it really, really needs more detailed investigation though, but.
Did you guys look into the LEED the House grants? LEED the House?
No, no. Okay, there was um, uh, Suzanne did mention some grant, but that. So maybe, maybe that was what she didn't mention, but she, I think it was like twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's.
From, I think actually it was the Ohio Department of Commerce, so I don't know if that's the same grant program or not.
Cemetery got one before, years ago.
I know the one she mentioned, you're, because of size of township, they're only, we're only eligible every other year to apply for. And I think this is, this would be a year to apply. So then um, couple other things possibly. If uh, we wanted to pursue looking at tornado sirens for the community. Um, I just very, very cursedly looked over um, manufacturers of tornado siren systems. And, and in my search, I kept coming up with Sentry Siren as kind of being the premier manufacturer, even some, some distributors resell their product. And really, uh, depending upon the reach and whatnot, I mean, uh, a pretty sophisticated system is, is going to be about ten thousand at a minimum, and then beyond that, you really need to have somebody come out and, and quote. So these would be like omnidirectional systems as opposed to rotating systems.
I can send you um, some information on that also because I was looking into that um, a year ago. And um, the fire chief did not recommend doing the investment in something like that. So I can send you the studies that he sent me.
Okay.
About it, um, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying based on what he sent me, what I read on them, um, there, I don't. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
If you can read it.
I mean, there are obviously um, systems that manually need to be activated, you know, based upon the information that like the fire department receives, it's not automatic, like it's not automatically tied in to National Weather Service or something, it's something that needs to be manually activated, so. But yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
That came up, you know, just in discussion with people around town, like since we've had a, a few small ones. Um, and the other thing would be uh, whether the board wants to look at um, the access control to the building. So, you know, do we want to continue to stay with keys or would we want to consider going to a um, some kind of um, either card access or wireless access um, so that um, you don't have to worry about physical keys. You can manage it, you know, through software. Um, you can activate those kind of systems, you can deactivate people out of them. You can even, you know, some of them are sophisticated, you can set up time zones of when they can enter a building. Uh, we have a lot of guest usage, you know, in the meeting rooms, uh, we could set up um, special access, so I haven't gotten any kind of pricing, um, I just was looking at different systems that were out there. But um, I can continue looking at that if, if there's an interest and if it's just the outside perimeter doors or, you know, secondary doors, you can do as much or as little as you want.
Mm-hmm, I think that's a great idea.
And that's all on my list.
Okay.
Buckle up.
Buckle up. Martha, I just wanted to ask you, did you, did you, I noticed, is the OPWC, the Workwise thing, is that squared away?
Yeah, he.
That's all good, okay.
Yeah.
And I still haven't seen anything from the IRS. So yeah, sometimes that's a good thing.
Well, I mean, they got to give us the numbers, it, it's the mail, so. It may get here next year.
Um, just for you guys' info, I was appointed to the EMA Executive Board. I don't know why they did that, but anyway.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, one of the things that came up, just for consideration down the road is firming up a snow parking van when we had all that, that happened the other night. Uh, right now, I guess it's set at three inches and um, I'll, Martha, do you know if we have anything that, a, a, a policy?
Yeah, I sent it today, it's on our website.
Yeah, I looked at it, but it doesn't really stipulate who has the authority to, you know, call it.
It, it is what it is.
Is what it is, okay, so we might want to.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was.
That was back before snow was invented.
No, I mean, it was, it had to be here two, two thousand and four, maybe. Yeah, you can update the policy, you know, it's not even a policy, it's an ordinance.
Who has the ordinance?
It's your ord- it's the township ordinance.
I didn't think we could.
It's a, it's a ban, I don't know, I wasn't a trustee at the time, but it.
I, I, I think, I, I just may have been perusing the ORC just for, you know.
Fun?
Fun, you know, um, but I do recall coming across something about townships can enact snow bans. So whether you want to call it an ordinance, whatever.
Parking, this is a parking, I don't know.
It's relative to parking, yes, and the ORC it says, you know, list all the conditions you can regulate parking.
Yeah, and you can, it's parking.
Snow is one of them.
You can regulate parking.
So that's, so, yep.
Okay, anyway, that's for future. Um, the other is I saw something about the Highland Fire, they want to sell that safety trailer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if you guys want to talk about that on Tuesday, but I'm okay with that.
Did, um, he emailed, did Jess email you? I talked to him this weekend about that because.
I think he said it all.
Oh, you talked about the trailer.
The tra- right.
He said about trailer, so yeah.
We got the resolution, right, that was, yeah, yes, okay. Because Jess and I talked about it on Saturday, because I was going to reach out to Granger Township and see how they were handling it. We were going to see if you wanted to reach out to Sharon Township and see how they were handling it. And then literally the very next day, that, that email came out. So yeah, I, we're going to have to make a resolution then.
Yeah.
For Tuesday, agreeing to sell it.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, I mean, it's, they're, what are they going to do with it? They're not using it.
Right, well, and that's why we just got the inflatable one also, because um, that one just, we couldn't use it anymore. That's it, that training trailer.
Um, and the Broadview Heights Agreement for Boston Road, I heard back from their uh, legal guy, he, it went through their work session, I think yesterday. And they'll take care of it on Monday night, so he'll have it back in time for Tuesday. I copied you guys on the email I sent to him, so you should have that in hand and, and ready for signing. And if you can sign it at that meeting and give it to Mike, then he can get it to Angie on Wednesday.
Perfect.
Okay. So interestingly, we talked about Crystal Brook and the, the uh, drainage to the street. And Health Department sent us a letter, which is the same one as this one is for another property now.
Yeah.
So in light of that, I uh, reached out to the county engineers, asking, you know, I was told that these are very rare occurrences and I've seen three instances in a matter of months. And he said, well, I said, what's the, what's the engineer's position on this? And they said, they don't like to do it. They don't, they don't think it's a good idea, they think that the property owner should be taking care of it in a different manner. And once it's, once that it, it fluent is discharged to the ditch. I, because I asked why, why is the health department, you know, pur- pur- purporting this and being supportive of it? And he said, once it's discharged to the ditch, it's out of their hands, they don't have to deal with it anymore. So, you know, maybe that's the case, I don't know. I asked uh, them for what kind of specific language or a template to provide authorization for the one that we agreed to. I haven't sent it yet, if you want to further consider that, maybe, you know, we send the authorization, but. Do you have, know any history of these in the township, Martha, discharging to the ditches?
I mean, a lot of septic systems in the township, they're of a certain age, discharge out to the ditch. Now, if you alter that, my question to the health department would be, if that is no longer an option, then what is the expense to the homeowner? Do they have to install a new type of system that doesn't discharge out that way? Because where's it going to go? Because the new systems that are installed, they do, you know, you have your spray system, you have everything, but I don't know. Your house probably goes out to the ditch, I mean, any house of a certain age. The discharge goes out to the ditch.
The one we spoke about at the last meeting was a spray system. And they said it was, it was, it was basically, it was easier to bring it to the ditch than deal with it any other way, and it would created additional problems for other homeowners if they didn't do that. And that's why I was supportive of, okay, well, if, if that's the case.
The situations that we were faced with, we were faced with homes like on it. There was one in Jaclyn, they, these were, these were homes where it always came out to the ditch. I can't speak to, I mean, that's a valid question you raised there.
So this new one is on Skyland.
And that one, I would say, would probably fit with the ones that we've.
The older ones.
Approved.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because those are small lots.
And older.
Yeah, it's, it's not even a happy.
And that's, he says it's like a point-six acre lot, I can't imagine you've got a lot of latitude there.
No.
Whereas the one we approved last month, that was like newer construction too.
It was, but it sounds like, and that's, to me, that one sounded like it was filed up construction.
Mm-hmm.
So they compacted the earth so much, there was no way for that spray system for that, the, it flew in from there to drain away, so. So if I hear from him in time, I'll send the uh, the template, you know, what they need to know for the, that was the Crystal Brook one. This one you guys can talk about and on uh, Tuesday, and if, whether you agree to it or not, let me know and.
You said, you've had three?
I saw three, there was another one in the email chain that was talking about the Crystal Brook one, it was apparently approved in the past.
Okay.
But.
So we don't have like a third one coming?
No.
This is, okay.
And you know, he, he said uh, you know, he, he said, uh, the, you know, like, some of these new ones where it's, it's a constant flow where some of the communities like, well, we don't want water in the ditches all the time, you know, and, I mean, that's a concern, but at the end of the day, you, you've got the homeowner to consider too, you know, that, how are they supposed to continue to live? Anyway, that's where that one is. I would be inclined to, to do this one based on the information that you're, you know. But for new construction, I don't know, maybe that's something that we need to look at from a zoning perspective, that somebody has to make sure that their, the system's operating properly, Health Department.
Yeah, and I think, and I think if it's new construction, the Health Department is only gonna permit certain, allow, you know, certain types of systems.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, though, that's, it seems like that's what they did on this last property, the Crystal Brook property.
Well, it seems like the recourse should go back to the contractor.
Yeah.
And it should be a.
Contractors are fun.
Yeah, assuming, assuming the contractor can be located. If they're still around.
Somebody, was my point, some, somebody let the ball drop on that one, is my opinion. So for the wishlist, um, I am fully supportive of solar, that was one of the ones that I always wanted, and it tied in with the, the rough project. I think that that's a good, I think that's a good deal. And also, in the past, had asked about, uh, doing an improvement on the township parking lot. So it was a lot of money to do the whole lot, but to capture the entryway and up to just past the, like, the police steps and across this way, uh, the estimate on that was a hundred and thirty-six K. So if we wanted to look at, you know, doing that pe- in pieces, I mean, that's, that'd be the first piece of it.
Is that reconcreting or is it paving?
That's an overlay, so, uh, Mike's gonna get numbers to, for that again, because again, that same thing, it's, was from the fall, and then also to look at the entire lot, but I don't know if we wanna spend all our money on that. That, it's a, it's a big chunk of change.
I'm sorry, didn't, um, we get something sent to us about that, um, the alternative for concrete? Do you remember this?
Talking about that, uh, permeable. That's big money.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought that was less money, but I was thinking, well, we don't wanna tear up our parking lot if we don't need to, so, okay.
The other thing I looked at was the, taking the sidewalk from Town Center down to the school, that would be about fifty-two K, roughly. Again, all rough estimates.
Said from where, from where to where?
From Town Center down to the new elementary.
Oh, okay.
I think that would be a good thing from the perspective of, you know, we, you know, we have the parade and whatnot. You know, sometimes people going from the school to Town Center. And, uh, the last one that I don't have any kind of firm number on was putting an electronic sign at the hall out here instead of across the street. Something that could be changed from inside the building, you know, you don't have to put little letters up anymore.
One and Suzanne would be so happy.
But that would also include relocating that rock that's out there, the monumental rock.
So actually, um, speaking of that sign, when Suzanne and I met, we talked about, while Mike talked about the old sandstone that was removed from the wall of Maple Hill. And, um, we talked about, gee, it'd be nice to have an electronic sign, and maybe you could set it in. You could take some of those sandstones and set it in within it, so it still kinda had, you know, it's part of old Hinckley.
Character.
Head character, and in fact, you mentioned the sidewalk from in town all the way to elementary school. You could almost set up like planters, you know, with six or eight blocks of stone along the way and, um, plant flowers or, you know, whatever you would want in them, and then people could sit on the sides of them. Um, just the thought that, you know, this is, I mean, just to kinda try and.
Got a little.
Keep the character, you know, it's, th- those, in fact, um, she mentioned that she found corner, not a cornerstone, I call it cornerstone, but maybe a signature stone of the individual who, uh, cut those stones for the cemetery. And, um, it'd be kinda neat maybe to even plant that out here or something, just kinda as a keepsake, so. Um, so, you know, those, some beautification thoughts, and Mike would be happy to get those blocks out of his garage, I know.
Are we, um, I'm sorry, are you done? Are you still going?
Though, though, those are my items for the list, you know, if, if we can't decide, I, I'm up for using it for roadwork, period, I mean, there's always roadwork to be done.
Well, no, actually, because Mike said, they mentioned something to that effect today. He said the engineer's office will engineer one project a year, so that's the OPWC.
He just told you that today? I'm gonna smack him.
Well, I mean, it's true.
No, when, when I ta- I talked to him yesterday.
What about your traffic light upgrade?
Oh.
Out here.
Right.
Oh, well, they, yeah, I, I talked with him this morning, he did, ODAT said, it's something they can do, but they don't have the numbers on it, and they're working on, he, he had no idea what the cost upgrade would be. But ODAT's working on it for us, so we'll have those.
So I was thinking, and I do not have numbers on this yet, um, but, you know, I have kind, not a small dollar amount that I would like to see us, um, invest in, and that would be one of them, is like that, the traffic light, um, you know, that we had talked about. Um, but also carrying over some things that we've talked about the last year. Um, maybe doing some type of like memorial box or something at Memorial Park for the Boy Scouts to put the ashes of the burned flags in, something like that. You know, this is not gonna be, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars, um, to do something like that. And then also kind of think along the lines of Brunswick Independence, um, at Christmas time, they have, um, just like those lights that they put on their utility poles down three oh three, something like that, that we could put in the center of town, just to kind of make a little special during the holidays. Um, something like that, you know, we're not talking about, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, so if you are both open to discussing that, I can start researching that and getting some numbers on that, and see even if, can you, can you do it? Like, do they have, um, is it just as simple as getting those and mounting them on the pole and you plug it in, or does something else need to be done?
Probably have to get permission from whoever owns the pole, right?
I would guess.
I would guess, I mean, I'm.
Jack's got a great contact there, right?
Right, you would know.
But I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying, who's gonna be against putting on Christmas decorations? I'm just laughing because whenever something's wrong with it, you can't find out who owns it, nobody wants.
You're, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, but you know, I paid attention, um, during the holidays this year, and it seems like more and more municipalities are getting these. So I would think, I mean.
I don't think it'd be a big deal.
It probably wouldn't be a big, so, just something I thought of, you know, that was something that I had a couple of people reach out to me over, um, the fall and say, you know, what are you guys thinking, you know, what if you could do something like this? And somebody had said something about, you know, what if we dress up the center of town at Christmas time? A great idea, that would not be something, that would be a huge expense, but that you can do year after year, and it's something that, I mean, I look, I look forward to driving down three oh three in Brunswick and, at, you know, in December, because I think it's pretty. To see all of those lights, they're just white lights, they're simple, but I like it, so.
I agree.
And it's something that I just think, which the, was the purpose of this, having this wishlist, is something that the entire township can benefit from. So it's not just, you know, people in Brookside who are getting a new road are benefiting from the funds that way. We wanted it to be something that
Right.
the entire township is going to benefit from, and that's what I tried to keep in mind with, um, these items when I was, when I was, um, coming up with this. That we could talk about getting, like, new bar caloungers and. For our active audience.
Then, then they could reserve their seats, too.
Well, you have to join the mo- movie club to do that. Speaking of that, th- those poles, that easement is still out there, and it's squared away with, with Brian Richter, he said it's all good to go and we can sign it. There is a place on it for it to be notarized, so I talked with the consultant for ODAT, and he's willing to come to the next meeting and do that. If you wanna vote on it that night, sign it and have him notarize it, or, or we can do it with our own notary.
Okay.
Let me just tell him to show up and.
Well, I'll leave that to the vice chair, who'll be running the meetings, so.
I mean, that's fine, or, yeah, I mean, well, we could, could, could we always vote on it? And, I mean, we can always sign it at a later date, right? Like, so we could have our, our township notary sign it, right? Like, he doesn't, we don't need to sign it that day that we.
Well, you have to have witnesses.
To sign.
When you sign it.
And we usually have. Yeah.
You'll have witnesses.
And you'll have a quorum.
He'll see you sign it, have them come on Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah. Just popped in my head, we have so far three applicants for the alternate positions, and it closes tomorrow. And, um, but we probably wanna have all three of us interviewing, so we may not be able to do interviews for a while.
So, next special meeting, um, did we wanna discuss when to schedule the next special meeting? Um, or we can wait until, um, until our next meeting to get it scheduled, um, but we would want a special meeting.
Right, we wanna know.
For, make sure, the purpose of interviewing, um.
Candidate.
Candidates. And I had it on my list to talk about, and I left my calendar. But I might be able to go off the top of my head.
I could do, uh, Monday, the twelfth. I'm gonna do it that soon.
Yeah, like, uh, late afternoon, like, uh, like last time, I think, we were.
Yeah, whichever you want.
Uh, if, I mean, if we could just do like at five o'clock, if that would work for both of you, starting at five.
On the twelfth.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Because I can't remember everybody who applied, but I would think we have to work around their
Yeah.
Schedules as well.
Yeah, um, I mean, five o'clock would be a, a better time to pick, just so we don't rule out any.
Five P M. Or just do it, um, before our next meeting, also. Oh, we may not be here for that.
No, the, well, the twentieth, I hate to wait that long. Right?
How many meetings?
I'll be gone on the twenty-first.
Okay, so, um, special meeting on Monday, February twelfth at five P M for the purpose of interviewing zoning and B Z A alternate candidates and possible decision. Actually, that zoning, would you like to let Suzanne know that? I mean, I'm admin, but you're zoning, so.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, you heard it, it's on the record, I'm not monkeys off my back. You can take care of it. And did either of you receive an email from the fire chief requesting a work session?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do you want to schedule another work session now, or would you prefer to do that?
Well, if we wait till Tuesday, one person will be here, so if he tells us what his availability is.
What if, okay.
Yeah.
Did he give you any dates that he was available in the email?
He said.
Cause I specifically told him, I said, emails separately, don't include me on the email, um.
I think he was looking at the week of the twelfth.
Okay, did he say anything about the twel- like, I'm just thinking, if we're gonna have a special meeting for interviewing candidates at five, what if we had a work session at four?
Uh, he didn't say works. So this is confusing, because it looks like he's asking for two things, a work session or executive session.
Executive session, we would, we would adjourn to executive session during work session.
Oh, I see.
Just like our organizational meeting where, when we went to.
Right, right. Well, um, I guess it would have to be after the five o'clock one. I can't do it before, cause I've got something else in the afternoon, so I, I couldn't get here like.
Um, so like six, like immediately following, because?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Or just say to follow.
To follow.
Immediately following, yeah, cause we might get additional applicants, right? Cause we have three right now.
Or.
Work session immediately following the special meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I will, I will call him when we leave here and see if that will work with him. So I'll tell him six-ish, just to have an idea.
Anything else for the good?
Well, go ahead. Well, um, I guess just thinking kind of out loud, um, whether the township wants to, uh, spend money on cleaning up individual properties as part of its wishlist.
I, I don't think so, and this is where I'm coming from on this. Considering what the cost of this first one ballooned to, I don't know that I wanna carry that kind of debt. Because, because it does become a debt, you paid for it, and then you're slowly gonna get it back incrementally. I, I don't.
Yeah, it wasn't on my list, it just, I was sitting here thinking about. I've been looking at.
I mean, it's hard. I know that I, there's a bunch of them out there. I mean, where, where do you draw the line?
Right.
Yep. Which was my question last year is where do you, where do you draw the line?
Right, and just because you can doesn't mean you should and.
Very good point.
You know. So I just wanted to be certain that that wasn't something.
I think in, in. This is just me thinking. And I could be wrong, but I think it got to the point where it's so out of hand, I think it needed to be addressed. When it started to become an issue and then, you know, by the time you get to this point, it's, the hole is so deep. That doesn't fix what has happened, but I think moving forward, you start, you know, being more proactive.
Um, you know, there's other mechanisms for dealing with that as well, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, a couple, couple of questions. What's your next, yeah, you know, I'm gonna be forwarding you the permanent appropriations on Tuesday. So, I mean, are you. Going to prioritize any of these wishlist items, or are they all just gonna be. Move forward. Uh, what's, what's your next step? Cause I need to know. For the money.
I say we go ahead with everything on my list since I had prices.
Well, and that, that is, it's a two-part question. It's great you guys did this, but what is your timeline for actually initiating these things? Cause we've been here before. It's ground, it's Groundhog Day again. So.
If we.
Let's figure this out and define it and stick with it.
I'd like to pick. If it was, okay, if it was. No, when I'm, when I'm, what I'm saying right here, if it was a perfect world right now. If I was the king, I'd say, pick the solar project, put that on the books right now and the roof.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't, I wasn't clear. We can't, I, I, this is very helpful, but none of these prices is a firm price. These are all estimates.
No, that's what I'm saying, though, if we, if we focus on. The top number and get a good hard number and say, yeah, we implement this this year.
I, I'm fine with that. I, I don't have an issue about you doing these things. I'm asking you, what is your next step here?
That's, so our next step is going to be, I would say.
When are you coming back with hard prices, or when are you going to determine what you have to bid out and what your specifications are? And what you are doing?
I am going to, um, I will contact the other three companies, the other three solar companies. Um, and have them come out with hard numbers.
No, 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 you, you're going.
I think, I think.
You're going to need an R F Q for this. You're going to need a defined project. Because of the cost of it. And then that R F Q will then have to be bid out. So you, you know, you can work with someone in developing an R F Q. But if you're talking two hundred and thirty thousand dollars potentially. You, 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 you can't sit there and be talking with multiple vendors about. What would you do? What would you do? What would you do? You have to bid out the exact same project. Now, you need examples of R F Qs. You know, we have R F Qs for other different projects. We, we bid out like fire station, architects or things like that. Um, but you might want to deal with someone specifically. Who understands what exactly you're looking for. So it, it, it isn't like a quick process.
So it sounds like maybe at a regular meeting, we should take all the things we talked about. And prioritize them, pick a few to champion and move ahead forward on. I mean.
I mean that now.
Well, some, I think you need to determine which of these projects you want to proceed with is going to require a competitive bidding process. And a defined project, because what you don't want to happen is you don't want to tell. Vendor A, you need this or that, he talks you into some other thing. It's, it, you, you, you need them to be all bidding on the same.
Right.
Thing, and so you have multiple projects here, at, at least three, at least three projects that are going.
To exceed the threshold.
To be competitively bid. Maybe the, you know, maybe the prosecutor's office can help you. Maybe there's another township. That has gone through the same process. Maybe they've had to review the R F Q. You know, there's things like that where. You don't have to reinvent the wheel here, but you do have to conform with, with the process.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what we would. If we were to say, yeah, we really like the solar, all three of us say, yes, we really like the solar. So we would have to create the R F Q for the solar project.
You would have to define your buildings, define what it is you actually, what.
Your requirements.
How much solar capacity you want.
You are a P.
They're the same thing, request for qualifications or request for proposal.
And then a separate one for the roof for both buildings.
Well, the, the other roof's a little easier, but if you think you're going to have. It, it, it looks like these may be under the competitive bidding, but you still should get three quotes on the same thing.
Well, like, would it be separate for roofing for this building and the police department is mine? Cause like this building, the, the number was sixty five thousand, so.
If you bid them out at the same time, you know.
It's gonna be over.
For the prosecutor's office, but I would not think if you're, if it's, if, you know, you can't. You have to be careful.
Okay.
You have to be careful and that, I would, that would be a question for the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
Yeah, but you certainly do want to. I mean, what the flooring, the flooring, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just say, yeah, seventy four thousand. You know?
And then it exceeds it and.
And then exceeds it, and then all of a sudden you realize you can't hire a contractor because. You, their estimate is beyond.
But I mean, you could, you could do that process. It doesn't matter what the bid is. I mean, even if it's lower is what my point. If, if the bid was sixty thousand, you could do the same thing on it.
Yeah, you stop that, the, the ten percent, you know, you can't go under or over. On that in accordance with our C, but so that's, you know, that's likely your next step.
Cause I was nervous about that with that number for the floor, but also. Just something to keep in mind is that it was the seventy four thousand, that was everything. That was the hallway, the bathroom and the senior room also, so it would be. Like considerably less if we didn't use the senior room just as an FYI for that.
But it's still good, you know, even though it's under that threshold, still get three quotes because. That seventy four might be a high price, maybe there's somebody else that might do it for, you know, for less and then.
It, I will tell you, I'll be hard pressed to get three because I had two other appointments with people to come out here. And they said, oh, you know, this job is too big for us. We aren't gonna do this. Really? Okay, so. But certainly can get additional, um. What, is there anything on any of the list that anybody is like, eh, I don't know about that? Like, what are you, what are your thoughts on the floor for the um old fire department?
I love that one too. I love that and this floor.
Okay.
Can I throw in that? Sorry.
No, it's okay.
You guys have to determine what you're doing with the base, because you don't want to be putting that.
That was, yep, that was, I told them, the flooring would not happen until after the bays are done.
So where are we going? Cause these are, these are questions, I have three things that I need to know. Where are you guys going with that fire department bay replacement? Where are you going with twenty five river road? Cause I need to budget for these things. And what are you going to do if. The district court finds in Hinkley's favor on the appeal, so then we go back and we're hiring the attorney again for. For what? Who knows what? So these are the things I need to know in order to find the right places for your wishlist.
Well, I, I think on the twenty five river, I mean. Bring that to the, uh, to one of our next meetings and make a decision on it. I don't.
Wait, do you have an estimate?
That estimate is, is um. The last numbers that came out were twenty thousand and twenty five thousand. Those were back in November. So it, it increased from the May numbers of where it was netted out at eighty eight hundred.
This is what I need to know.
So I, you know.
Put that money aside if you guys are gonna do that. I need to put that money aside if you're gonna hire more attorneys. I need to put the money aside if you're going to proceed on that project before I can do anything with your wishlist.
Well, the bay doors, I was holding, hoping that the weather would crack here. Like toward, towards the end of February, put it back out of the end of February.
The gas bill for this building. Was over a thousand dollars last month.
Well, if I put it out now and they have that whole wall open for the, for two weeks or whatever, then.
I mean, you still, you gotta advertise it, you gotta.
Yeah.
It's in there for three weeks, you gotta open it, you.
Cause is it sixty days or ninety days from, but what?
No, no, I mean, it's not like they're gonna start, they're gonna start when they can start.
Right.
Uh, I'm just saying, I need to, I did, I, I need to know these things. And these have been hanging out there for a long time.
Yes, and that's, that was um something I told everybody that that had to be done before we were even looking at anything like that, so.
All right, the notice for the special meeting include. The uh. This discussion and. The decision on going out to bid for that again. Do I have to do that again or not?
Yeah, but are you having a work session or are you having a special meeting?
We have a special meeting on the twelfth.
Okay, but are you going to hire the same architect? I mean, what's going on with?
Well, I, I will, cause I think he owes us, I think he owes us one, cause he.
He hasn't even billed us yet. He hasn't even charged us for the last time, but I'm just saying, this is going out to bid four times. I, I just do not understand why.
So you need.
The estimate is not jiving with.
The last one. Why did we had to resend it?
Be- because it was not bid out correctly, or the, the, the documents were not correct in.
Right.
Specifications.
It's like, we, we had a, a successful bidder, but. So that, that's where the problem occurred there, and I think that was due to the architect.
That's my question. That's my question.
So do we change the architect is your question?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't even know what, I mean, you want to go for it one more time and. And hope it's. I, I mean, this is, you guys, this is, this is your third year. This is, in this whole thing started, Jim Burns was still a trustee.
Yeah.
And the. Back then, the first quote was in the mid fifties, upper fifty thousands. And now we're what? A hundred and. What was the last one? I don't remember.
One ten?
Wouldn't I think, yeah.
One ten.
I mean, if you don't, that's fine. I just need to know, I, cause I need to set this money aside for.
Yes, and I would love to see that done before.
Memorial Day?
I don't think it's gonna happen before Memorial Day, but I mean, I would like to see it done before July, maybe.
I'd like to see it done before the end of my term. I'm being the optimist.
Realist.
I have a completely revised package from Richter, so with everything that's good to go. I say just have this guy let it again one more time.
I don't care.
Okay.
So put it on the twelfth and we'll.
Special me, on the special.
On the special meeting.
So, so the work session will still follow your special meeting, especially it's gonna get longer.
Social media is gonna get longer by like five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Cause we're just going to agree to put it out to bid. So the special meeting will get learn, longer by two minutes, because we just discussed it. Okay, so put that one out to bid again, we'll decide on that. We'll officially make the official decision on Monday, the twelfth to rebid. The east wall. And then. For. Planning purposes, we would say solar roof.
Flooring.
Flooring. Am I, are we giving you what you're needing or?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fine. I guess, and, and, I mean, are you? What do you want to do with River Road? I mean, that's something you can talk about now.
Well, the reality is. You know, we look at these projects as things that benefit the community as a whole. And um. If we were to spend that kind of money on one property owner. And then however many other property owners, is that really spending. Our community tax dollars for the benefit of the community? It just seems that that one has languished for really long time. Um, there are other methods for dealing with zoning violations, you know, like. There is penalties that can be assessed, and so I, I can't see. Putting aside monies for stuff like that.
Basically, the cost is the security and cleaning the property.
Well, you know what, that, the, I have the last couple of documents that came across in November. And um, so back in May, it was. Uh, eleven something and then deduct a hundred fifty for each vehicle. And it dropped it down to eighty eight hundred. Then I see another document that says it's twenty thousand. And then right behind that, oh, and if you want the additional security, it's twenty five thousand. And I didn't see anything in that quote that talked about deducting for vehicles. And the price, it was just kind of like, after reviewing everything, this is the quote, this is our final quote, twenty thousand. Oh, and then Hinkley Township wants security, so it's another five thousand, which doesn't even equate to officers at. The rate of fifty dollars an hour for two weeks, because that would be eight thousand, so theoretically. Twenty should go to twenty eight, but it says twenty five, so. You know, I. That seems to be ridiculous. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money.
Initially wasn't removing the vehicles awash because they were going to. It, it, at least my understanding is it's the property, like the, the. You know, I don't, I don't know.
The cleaning up the debris.
Cleaning up the debris that is.
Right, cause, cause there's. There's, there's ten dumpsters at six hundred apiece, two hundred tires at three dollars each for another six hundred. Um, that was the early breakdown of the costs. And then, so, you know, if you take, and then another. Twenty five hundred for just. The crew that was gonna work it or whatever, so maybe the vehicles were awash. Uh, but now the quote says. Uh, but now the quote says. Like I said, twenty or twenty five, depending upon whether you want security. And there's no breakdown, it just says for the overall project, you know, to remove the vehicles and debris and. And whatnot, so I, you know. It just. It's languished and. It's not, um. You know.
I just don't see, you know, you, you spend that money and there's no guarantee it corrects the problem. It's, it. It's a temporary solution in that it could revert and.
And, and look at it from the property owner's perspective, thank you for cleaning up my property. And I don't have to worry about paying for it until, you know, the property is sold or whatever. And we're out the money.
Well, there's, there's a lien and then the, that funnels back, but who knows how long it's for.
For many, many, many years, it would take to get that kind of money back.
If you do this one and let's, let's say you just did ten more properties. I mean, you could be up, you could be up to a quarter million dollars.
Easily.
Well, and this was kind of what I was saying last year with it is I feel that it's a liability on the township if. I, I think it's a very slippery slope. Once we start this and I think that we take on a liability as the township if we are going in and. Um, you know, cleaning up, forcing someone to have their property cleaned up, then you have to do the next one. That's, you know, this is subjective now. What's worse, property A, property B, or property C? Now it's subjective. So now you have to do the same thing to B and C. If not property A, you wouldn't want them coming back and taking legal action. Against us, so I feel like it is. It, it opens Pandora's box by, by doing it. And that was my concern on top of the fact that I felt like it was kind of an overreach. I understand. You know, we have zoning. I know that we have, um. Zoning rules that need to be applied, but those need to be applied at all levels, not just, not just. That, the, the eyesores and something that, oh, it's not that big of a deal. It's, I think they need to be applied across the board and to your point is, I think we have fees, right? We, I, I talked to Tom Wilson about it in the fall and I said, well. Find them. And he said, well, how?
Well, so right now, you know, townships unfortunately don't have the, the strongest, um, support in the O R C. But it does talk about, um, a township can find. A entity, for lack of a better word, zoning violations up, up to five hundred dollars a day. And each day could be considered a new occurrence. That's out there right now. Actually, O Tarma in their omnibus bill is actually strengthening. Kind of the language in there to make it a little easier. And so that's, and that means a violation of the zoning resolution. So that could mean anything and. All it says up to a maximum five hundred, which means, you know, to me, it would seem that. There could be a schedule of penalty fee, penalty fees, if you wanna call them that. Um, but there can be other approaches and that would be basically, um. No investment from the township. I mean, there may be some notices and formal things, but you're not investing. A lot of money that, you know, you may not see back in twenty years, rather, um, you apply a fine. And if that person doesn't pay, then, you know, you can take that lean route again. But again, you're not putting any money into it. I mean, I think these are things that still kinda wanna look into, but. Um, it would mean, and like I think what you're saying.
The opposite approach.
Equitably, um, looking at zoning violations and, you know, trying to work with. The property owners, whoever to try and remedy it, cause that's always the recommendation.
Cause we don't want to find you.
We don't really want.
Right.
That's right. That's a, a matter of last recourse.
We want resolution.
But that's, you know, that's maybe a better way to approach it than, um, go and hire out companies and. Spend township dollars for one thing. And then, you know, you don't have that money available for maybe something that becomes an emergency and. And there's a need that we owe, but we don't have that because we've spent it on this. So. Yeah, I don't know if that means it's just.
So if I am hearing everybody correctly. We are talking about, uh, at the next meeting. Rescinding. That resolution.
I, I even looked at their resolution and that resolution. Never, um.
Had a timeline.
Or, yeah, well, kinda had a timeline, but never had any costs associated with it. So if you didn't have money budgeted to do it, you couldn't do it. Uh, uh, so the resolution kind of lacked teeth because it didn't have any.
No, I mean that.
So.
Yeah, there is a, um. That wouldn't apply in that case at that point.
So.
It gives you the authority.
Yeah, it gives you the authority, but, um.
But I, if there's an alternate avenue where you can impose a fine, that's the same penalty that you're looking at. And, and, and if those accrue, the individual is more likely to start taking action on their own.
Mm-hmm, right, that's, I mean, that's the hammer at, at the last resort that you wanna use, I mean. I mean, because you, you, it does, you go down a slippery slope, you know, you take pictures. Um, somebody can say, well, that's not a junk vehicle because, well, it doesn't. You know, your picture doesn't, isn't good enough to show that, you know, um. There's like wheels missing or, you know, something's missing. I mean, the picture may indicate, well, you know. Maybe it will run, you know, and it, it becomes a subjective call and, and, you know, you end up in court over it and it becomes a.
I'm not disputing that there's an issue there, that, you know, that. That's readily apparent, I mean. It's just that, uh, the, the, I think it's, would create a financial burden for us is what I think. If we were to continue down that path, maybe in this once instance, yeah, we get through it, but, but. Where do you go from there? And is it fair to do one and not the other?
I don't, yeah, I don't think it's fair to do one and not the others, and who's to say that that's the worst one in the township? It's, I think that's, it's very subjective, so, and I also think that by. Having an approach like this to it is going to be much easier to manage. And it's going to be easier to, um, notify multiple violations at one time instead of. You know, the answer that I've gotten when I've spoken with Tom Wilson is, well, we're, we're working on that. We're working on this property and this property and this property, but we're doing this one first. Well, you start sending out your letters of violation to, now you're sending those out saying, hey. We've been sending you these notices, um. There's, there's, there's a fine involved with this, so you know, you have thirty days or sixty days. You know, I think that you're gonna be able to cover more ground and maybe to Jack's point, actually see results. Okay.
So we would need to resend.
Uh, you'd have to call the prosecutor. I just need to know if I need to put money away for it. That's my question.
I'm going to say, I don't think, I don't think we.
Okay.
So you got two questions to answer, right? Now you have, there were three?
Well, what's.
The attorney?
Yeah. Maybe you don't have an answer for that, but I'd like you to think about it.
Yeah, I don't have any, unless we're talking about.
Ask him that question, like, what, what is?
What next?
What next? How much is, is what next gonna cost us? That's the question I need you to ask him, if you guys do prevail.
I will reach out to him.
Thank you.
I mean, sorry.
Just ask, I'll, I'll reach out to him, I'll ask, okay.
Illegal bills and some of your, you know, some of your. Wish list money, that's where that went too.
Got it. So you have answers to two and a half questions.
No, you did good.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
She's like, I'm dropping the breadcrumbs. They're not picking them up.
Gotta use my mom.
Anything else for tonight?
No. No, I'm good.
All right, I will move to adjourn at six twenty one P M.
Second.
On favor?
I.